Right, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much for having me in and stopping on the evening after serious discussions earlier tonight. And I really appreciate your dedication to staying on this meeting. Which brings on to item one, apologies for absence, have you got any apologies? And item two, get curations interest all members declared.
Just to clarify, Dean is going to join remotely.
Dean is going to join remotely, are we able to let Dean in?
Please.
Okay, thank you. And item three, which is the minutes of the meeting, are they happy?
Yep.
And minutes, are we?
Great. Yep.
Thank you very much, which brings us to item four, which is the action list, which has, um, please just see if there's anything on that action list that gives off consideration, um, which you need to bring to our attention. But one item I believe the, um, the S officer wants to mention really on there, is that correct?
Yeah.
What item is that?
Item six, one, nine, dash twenty-one, music in the market, proposal to keep music in the market in the town centre motion, vote in favour. Um, that just needs to be on there because.
Taken that action.
It was agreed at the last meeting or the one before that, and it will be in the town centre.
Members happy for that to be removed from the action list?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, how's the, will it?
I've just noticed, um, I believe we organised to buy a price flag for five months as well. Um, and that's going to be flown on the first of June next month.
I believe that when I conversed with the town clerk, flag would be in order.
Hmm.
Um, and it was going to be flown, if you let the town clerk and the event coordinator email you personally to let you know the date and what it is, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Um, because I know it was your initiative, um, and that we flew a flag, so you noted. Um, right, was there anything else on those action lists? There are quite, um, spending for comedy night we're still working on, and so we can't really action that, because there's still internal discussions around that, which will come back at a later stage. Um, everything else on there, I think, is jobs we're working on, the conversation that's ongoing, so we can't really, um, um, there's no correspondence from them here tonight, so, or whatever, so with that ongoing, that conversation, so if you're happy, we'll bring that to the next meeting. Um, which moves us swiftly on to, um, the market, so I'd like to thank the officers and everyone what they're doing there. Um, any discussion around the market, which is quite a positive report, I think.
Brilliant.
Thank you, Charles, that's the town clerk.
Yeah. I mean. Yeah, but it worth noting that we turned the markets around since twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two through Covid, and, and, you know, we're actually showing far more income now than we did before, so as a committee, I think you can be right, be proud for the work of the officers on our behalf.
Yeah.
And, um, and we have a minute in the, can we have a minute in the notes to greet, thank, um, new town centre manager for the work and for the market manager. And Deputy Town Clerk for their work on this, I think it was important, they've been working really very hard.
Yeah.
And that money supports lots of other activities in the council. I think we should all spend it on this committee, but the town clerk, I didn't mean of that. Um, right, um, I've won that argument yet. Um, events review, um, as you can see, the events review is attached. Amanda, it would pleasure for more.
Okay, first one is the twinning event that we had on nineteenth of March. Um, just ask that you, um, read the report and agree that next time we have a twinning event that we follow the same format as we did this time.
Great, that is very well. Good to find.
Um, just to add that it was an excellent tuning event, thank you to the team, ETC team who organised it all, it's the best one I've attended.
Yeah.
Uh, and it went very well, and, uh, guests and visitors were, I hope, duly impressed.
Um, I, I thoroughly enjoyed it, and, um, personally, and, um, I must say, um, a bit highlighted the evening's meeting, um, was listening to Margaret make free speeches in three different languages.
Yes.
And I think we must record in our minutes our praise for her dedication to the job.
Yes, we must do.
I, I mean, that was pretty, um, impressive, Margaret, and, um, I am got a clue what you said in two of the languages, but, um, I'm sure it says what you said in English.
I agree.
I, I agree that the, um, the linguistic skills were amazing, but I did think you were going to say the highlight was the Morris dancing.
Yeah.
Which was such a highlight for the rest of us.
Um, well, I, I have to declare a patrician interest in that, um, as I did, did do some Morris dancing under the instructions and safety of the town clerk, but I don't think the guidance was successful, and I think I need a lot more instruction before attempting out again. Um, and although some of the blues were close, that's as much as I can get, council with it.
I'd also like to go on the trail of thanks, and, um, I'll say that, as the French say, it was the pièce de résistance, which was the food, I think that the food was absolutely brilliant, um, and they couldn't have organised and facilitated it any better than they did, so smashing job for that team.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
A general note of wellbeing, then I think, um, um, I think.
Thanks around.
In fact, general thanks, note to all those involved in it, and, and generally, I think we could safely say, um, with the way the room looked and the way we set it and the conduct of the civic section, we did it well. The only thing I will say, please respect the fact that I cannot talk as long as, uh, gentlemen of Germany could. And, and I now, and I, I, I now submit to his superiority in speaking, um, and I have to admit when I've been beaten. Um, but, oh, James aside, he's a lovely man, um, okay, right.
There's one more point to the town meeting, if we can record, I guess you most probably have, how this whole thing came about, original file, so for future events, we can just refer to it quickly and.
It's, it's always been filed, and over the years, I think that's several I've done, involved in now, we have filed. What we do is we add knowledge learned from this one to when we do the next one, we've got that then, and then the committee will review it at some point in the future.
We do that.
Yeah, we do that, so it's always done, it's always done. Right, um, six point two, which basically, um, town centre manager, um, report attached, um. Any comments on that, Amanda?
Amanda, Claire, did you want to talk about?
Do you want to lead on that, Claire?
Um, I think basically you've already discussed it, it was the market, so, so people of the town had something going on for them in twenty days. Um, there was an empire band, a lime artist, forest men, the giant deck chair, and obviously the four new market, because these birds were all out in the centre of the town, weather was lovely.
Yeah.
Um, some of the social media that came from it is really, really nice, um, people really seemed to know what was going on there.
I can firmly recommend the deck chair, it's big enough to get anybody's ego in. Um, and, and, and if you ever want to go back and feel like you were a small child again, try the deck chair out, it's immensely large, and you do feel, um, young again, but you can't get out of it very well. You need a tug to get out of it, because you're sinking it, but I did try it out on two occasions, and it's marvelous. Um, thank you very much, which moves us on to item seven, which is the Platinum Jubilee, Amanda, a terrible update on that, if I'm wrong?
No, you're right.
I'm right, you're not right.
The Platinum Jubilee Weekend is the, um, second and third of June, that's Thursday and Friday, which is the, the New Bank Holiday. Um, and then obviously it would go over the weekend, um, on the second, which is the Thursday, um, there's the Celebrate Buckingham event, which there's a written report about that, um, that is on during the day at one o'clock. Um, there's a national town crier cry, so they'll all be crying across the country, um, at one o'clock, so Russell will be down at Celebrate Buckingham doing that. And then instead of having our usual.
Where is this going to be created, where's the other day, is it?
It's in the paddocks.
No, it's in the paddocks, sorry.
Thursday.
Yeah, I think it's in the Celebrate Buckingham report.
It is, yeah, eleven till three.
Yeah.
So, Russell will be down there at one o'clock, um, and then town criers all across the country will be, um, doing the national cry. Um, we're not having our normal beacon that we have, um, instead, a beacon has, is being purchased by the church and will be on the church. Um, that will be lit at, I think it's quarter to ten.
Yeah, nine forty-five.
So the beacons will be lit all across the country, um, and I have contacted the piper, because they asked that the pipers also, um, take part in the event, um, before the beacons are lit, but I haven't heard that from him yet, so I'm going to chase him up again this week. Um, but the rest of the celebrations for the Jubilee Weekend are in written reports. So, first one.
Yeah, carry on.
First one is Celebrate Buckingham, and unfortunately Bethany is not here to report on that, um, but she is leading on that event this year, um, and we just asked that you read the report and note.
Okay, is that okay?
She's been working really hard on that, and I think we're just about there.
Nice.
Should be good.
And the picnic indeed, um, that's.
Hold on, we've got music in the market, and then on the fourth of June, um, which is the Fri-, uh, third of June, which is the Friday, uh, music in the market. Because we've lost the end of May bank holiday, we've combined it into the Jubilee celebrations, so that will be organised by the acoustic club as usual, um, we'll be there to support it.
I noticed just for the members that Dean's joined us, um, on.
Hi.
Hi Dean, welcome. Um, just to say, usual thing, music in the market, be like any other time, but it's at a different time, and all those decisions were taken earlier. And I think if, we will be doing some, so press these social media around this near the time. Um, this is all stuff we've really discussed in committee, it's just a matter of reaffirming it, so we're happy to, to note all those reports, uh, with a note of thanks to the officers for the work they've done, unless Dean, who wasn't present, has got any questions on the report? Okay, thank you.
We are going to dress the town in red, white and blue, so the, um, union flags will be going up, we've got bunting and all those things, so.
And can we agree we'll send a note of the timings and everything on this to the committee, um, after the meetings, they've got to, in case they can make themselves available to support the officers during the weekend? Because different people work at different times and got different jobs, different commitments, and it could be between all of us, we can at least give the officers support, but I will be available all weekend, but, um, anyone who's got the patience to join me, um.
We'll just tie it somewhere in the little reports as well.
Yeah, and with, where it is, the time is there, but I think a note to us and a note to the wider council, because these have been done on their behalf.
Absolutely.
Um, so that they don't feel left out, and we'll be glad to see them, which moves us on to item eight, which is, uh, which I said, I, I did a bit on the pitch, because I, I said, no, all the reports.
Oh, sorry.
But, bit me on the pitch and say, go on.
Um, just to note the reports.
Okay, well, very good, I, I, I love that expression, still remember what it was, it was a really good one, I love it.
Pretty echo, right?
Yeah, it was a bit echo, yeah, thank you, Amanda, you should never stop me when I'm going quick, it's not a good thing to say.
It's lost its thread now.
I'm going to go after President, I think we're done now. Um, Spring, um, Green Fair, please, um, I think we did need to talk on that, because that's the next event we've got coming up. Um, so if members want to discuss that, Amanda can just take us through what it is, because you're not actually doing the event, I think Nina's actually leading on that. Uh, but are you going to be there, or are you doing it?
Doing it with Nina.
You're doing it with Nina?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it used to be known as the Spring Fair, but, um, at committee, I don't know if it was beginning of the year or end of last year, you all agreed on calling it the Spring Green Fair. Um, so it's basically the same as it's always been, um, it'd be the cattle pens on the twenty-fourth of April, we're starting at ten, and it'll be finished by two, there's a road closure in, in place, um, for the, the road that goes sort of between cattle pens and prezzos. Um, the aim of the event, as it says in the report, is a range of stalls to share information on community projects, environmental campaigns and sustainable business innovations. We've got, in the report, at the time of writing, we've got fifteen stall holders signed up, I think there's seventeen now. Um, I've listed who, who's coming. Warren is coming with the, um, electric vehicles, I think he's bringing three of them.
How can he drive through?
Wow.
He's a marvelous bloke, he can drive three cars at once, I mean, that's quite.
I'll put a drive on for him.
Yeah, no, I don't think that would be much, much appreciated, um, but, um, he's got a battery in it, hasn't he? And, um, anyway.
I have, I have been in touch with the ladies' Morris dancing group from Hottersbury, um, and.
Well, Queen's Ark.
Queen's Ark, yes, um, he was going to check with them to make sure that they're favourable to dance that day, if not, I've got another couple in mind that I will contact.
They have big sticks.
Have big sticks? Uh-oh, can we really, they have big sticks? Margaret?
Uh, thank you, do I need to stand?
No.
No, no, thank you.
Not for me.
It's only for council.
You don't have to stand for me, Margaret.
Pass the clock.
You're all the bear, I have to stand for you, you don't have to stand for me.
And I had that it was eleven till two, and I just wondered, can we just double check the timings and what's already gone out in, definitely ten till two.
Ten till two, yeah.
Just what's already gone out on social media, whether it is ten, whether it's gone out eleven till two.
I'll double check that, it should be ten till two.
The message is the same.
Compliment.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Yeah, because we moved it forward, um, because the scout parade was going in the afternoon, that's been cancelled.
Okay, that's maybe where I've, I've got it wrong then.
Yeah, I have to keep thinking.
They gave a note to us, they didn't say why, but there was an expected circus start, so, um, which is their right, and we were going to support that.
Yeah, I was due to go to that series, yeah, maybe.
But I'm sure they'll make their own statement of that, it is nice that this event's, um, gone back to what originally did it at, the environment event, which started, it was probably nine years ago.
Seven.
Seven years ago, and, um, and I think at the time we did the first event, I think it was councillor Riffnell, um, who was always thinking on the environment at the time, was thinking that we did this event, and, um, and it's gone back to being green, and, oh, I'd like to make it, our thanks for everybody doing it and giving initiatives tonight, do you believe the mayor's going to attend it, aren't you? And you'll, you'll be there, good, that's good, and if any members are available throughout the day, and I know that you're attending it, aren't you? You're doing the Swifts, we'd like to give a little information about what it is for the public, so that they know what Swifts project is, and that's really close to you a lot.
Um, what now?
It's a little bit.
Oh, it's, um, Swifts are in huge decline, their numbers have halved in twenty years. Um, and there's loads of things that people can do to help them, like putting up boxes, and so there's a link up there with Menin Sheds, I can, I can book people at, um, go and get your box from Menin Sheds, um, and just, uh, an awareness of, um, do people even know which are Swifts, what are some house martins? Um, and maybe their numbers are declining because of the lack of insect food, so there's another link up with themes of the Green Fair as well.
And that is something you've worked on for a number of years, so.
And it, it links up with, um, planning and housing, um, the, the council are now, um, trying to get Swift bricks put into new builds.
Yeah.
On the cemetery.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank, thank you very much, I think it's important to do minutes, because people may wonder what it is, and, uh, and, which to me, minute agreement, um, the counter everything's involved in it, and a little bit of facts around the actual Swifts, which, um, I think it's important, and of course, in our town, you may wonder why San Martin drives, or San Martin Drive, when I was a boy, he had San Martins. They built the houses there, whatever, and there's no San Martins now, um, and they used to fly out there and come back every year, and that was named in there, and they didn't come back, so I don't know where they went, they're not in Buckingham now, unfortunately, um, and that was a big nesting place for them.
I get plenty of starlings in my garden, making a mess and scaring off all the little birds.
I've got lots of birds in my garden, but I talk to them all the while with food and things, but, um, and they're very friendly, um, I tried to, I've got a blackbird that comes into my house.
Oh, yes, yeah, it does, yeah.
Comes into my house and, and now, and greets me, um, but anyway, that's enough about my blackbird, um, thank you very much for that, and I look forward to all you being present at it. Um, the fringe event, the information is in the report, um, I think it's got a bit of sound, yes?
Um. The Fringe Week, so that's going to run from the sixteenth, uh, sixteenth of July to the twenty-fourth of July, um. We have in the Oxford Fiddle Group on Tuesday the nineteenth, since the report was written, um, Mikey Dyson has come back and confirmed that the quiz night will be on Wednesday the twentieth, and that he's going to have so, a couple of rounds where it will be Buckingham based, um, so that'd be nice. I've spoken to, um, Rachel at the Buckingham School and confirmed the youth project, so that'll be on the evening of Thursday the twenty-first, and I know that's something that a lot of you have attended in the past. Um, this year it should be hosted at in school.
Can we, with the committee's agreement, and ask whether we can use if the weather's right, the outdoor stage?
Hmm, yeah.
We've, we've done it with the outdoor stage there, and it's quite actually nice to be outdoors with the, oh, atmosphere, and, um.
Yeah.
And I think we, so I think we did it, you can judge, one of us, um, commemoration years, didn't we?
We did, it's the year that I was mayor.
That's right.
Because it's the project that I work on with Amanda anyway, it kind of tied it nicely, it's about the war, wasn't it, and it was just brilliant.
It was a very, very moving, yeah, moving affair, to be honest, and.
They haven't been able to beat that one.
No, they haven't, have they?
And it's a combined effort, because we started this project, which was led by, and this to try and do project to get the two schools cooperating together, but there was nothing until that, now they do cooperate.
Yeah.
So I think we could, just a little tick there, that's something that we did.
We're back very well then, don't we?
Yeah.
No.
And you do, right, so the other bit, we're going to meet once more, um, before the fringe, so we'll, um, can't read the guidelines, you read it out, can't, pardon? Oh, the marquees, yeah, um, we've had some prices for marquees, approximately, um, about five thousand pounds, the new marquee is, if we agree with the marquee tonight, we can actually then start tailing our prices down to it, um, and there may be other uses for it over the weekend.
Is it in here, on the agenda?
It's here, um, I'll just circulate, it wasn't made in gender, but it's part of the report, we've just got the cost in.
Oh, there on the report, is that?
It's not on the report.
Oh.
No.
Um, if you, I'll circulate this round.
Thank you. Because receiving that one, I've also, because I went out for three quotes, um, one company aren't available that night, that quote came back, and then this evening, I received the third quote, and it's approximately the same, same price.
Very much assured.
Um, to explain it briefly, it's because we were going to do comedy night up there in the marquee, there may be a civic event in it, and we may fill it with other things, if we don't, that we agree the principle that we'll go out and, um, um, allow myself, um, as the chair and, and the officers and Amanda to actually agree at a later stage, because we're, we're not in the planning, but we need to get the cost in, to actually plan some of the other events, um, and we'll be waiting, because Covid, because of every event we're doing, um, getting these costs in, um.
So we've got a budget for this, what's it going to come out of?
Come out of the total budget of the event, but we will bring back to, we need to create now, that you're happy for us to go out and order to get costs and what further for the marquee, that we can bring back a further report, we agreed at a previous meeting, we'd have a fringe meeting, there was no point in having a fringe meeting of the committee, because everybody's on it. Uh, but if we agree in principle, we accept the costs, and we can go away and work out some costs, which we'll bring to the fringe meeting, and then we'll finalise it, but we have to plan the events.
What budget is it coming out of, because you're always.
The budget of the fringe.
The fringe budget, okay.
The fringe budget.
And what have we got in there now?
Um, what have we got in there now?
I'll put it on the header.
Um, so it's about six thousand, you know, fringe, and out of that, um, comes the fringe brochure, um, the hire of the venue for the Oxford Fiddle Group.
Six, four, two, five.
Anything else?
So that's going to be five thousand.
Let's, let's not be carried away with, it is one, there's income and expenditure budget for the fringe, so what I'm saying is, if you agree for us to go and work out some budgets nowadays, what we'll do then is we'll bring back a costed budget for the fringe to a fringe committee meeting, that we can see when the town clerk's at chance and the manager's looking at it, if you see what's coming in, what's going out, against income and any other event, civic event, or whatever we might do, or what the costs are, those conversations can't happen tonight, we've only just got that information tonight, but it'd be wrong of us to keep it from you as a committee, so it'll come back to you via a, uh, another fringe meeting with a full costed report. That, and then we can make a decision on that, if we don't do that, we're going to have to revert back to the community centre, and the, the community centre is only available infrequently during that period, and this is an option where, where we can, but I'll guarantee we'll bring back some to the fringe meeting, which shows your expenditure, I can't give it you now, because I've only just seen that figure myself, and despite the fact that I'm not exactly dim, I can't actually produce a set of figures off the top of my head, um, if you just accept that we're going to do that, and the committee will get it to the fringe committee, all the information will be given to you, but we just need to be able to go away and work out some costs for the week. Because we can't do that, we can't have fringe, so are you happy with that, and are we happy to, and work us a cost to bring back? And one set of costs will be with the, using the community centre, one set of costs will be using the marquee, and whether it balances.
Right.
Top of the post, is that, are we happy to do that? Is it too difficult, that we just move on, are we happy to bring that back to a future meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, those costs there are just for the hire of the marquee, on top of that would be stage lighting and security, so it's going to push your costs up to, I think it was between six and seven thousand, isn't it, when you looked at it?
Totally, yes.
Yeah, but that is, that is not for the whole week.
No.
That is just.
For the twenty-four hours.
Yeah, for twenty-four hours.
We've got six rounds in the fringe budget, there's going to be more.
But that budget covers the hire of the venue for the Oxford Fiddle Group, which is two hundred pounds. Um, and other things, so the, the brochure, the distribution of the brochure.
Oh, income, if you're happy that we bring back.
It shows for me coming back the costings, then.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I want to do, you've come about the costings.
Yeah.
We can't make a decision tonight, because we've just got a piece of paper, it isn't in the agenda.
Exactly.
So you're just seeing yet that we're going to agree to come about the costings.
That's fine.
For both sections.
Yeah, we can't agree to spend, no.
And do.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs Chairman, the comedy night, is that a separate budget for the comedy night, or in, or in this case, been included in the fringe? Because if it's the separate for the comedy night, then the, the money, yes, okay.
Comedy night is supposed to be self-funded, so the.
Yes, exactly.
The income should actually expect.
Yeah, that's, that's a reason for them.
So then the question is whether that's six to seven thousand.
It doesn't come out of the fringe, but it's, it's also in the comedy combined, yes?
And, and maybe it's the event, you work out all the costs, and if it's all, we'll bring it back as the two options together.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, because I don't want to prejudice those things going forward, I want us to be able to make a decision with figures here, all I really want you to do is see it, because I've only just seen that tonight, so.
We're only asking us to bring, bring back the costings, and that, there's no issue.
No, so we're happy to bring, we're coming back with it, in principle, we'll look at it, if it's not, we won't do it, will we?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right, fine, um, so we've done that, we've done the fringe, four coming events, um, we've got the list in front of us, which I think we would be rightfully proud of.
Absolutely.
The brochure, you've got to do that, uh, under confidential.
Oh, yeah.
You can't do that now, it's under confidential.
Amazing.
I'm sorry.
You can't agree that until it's confidential.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, four coming events, you can see them all in front of us, we've got the Spring Fair, obviously Scout Parade not going on, May Day, um, Buckingham's Char, um, celebrates, Music in the Market, picnic, it goes on, I think we can rightfully say that that's a hell of a list of events, um, throughout the year, that should keep, um, most of our staff busy, um, and most of the mayor, plenty of places for Margaret to go. Um, um, apart from everywhere else she's got to go, um, but it's no larger than what we've done, but if you notice, the events have been progressed because of the decisions we took earlier to move some of the events from May into June, um, to allow, um, the officers to have a little bit of a gap before they start, um, working on the events, oh, sorry, um. Hello, Dean.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Dean.
Sorry, um, just a quick comment to add to the list of e-events, or to, um, combine what you're doing there, the university are putting on the annual duck race again this year. Um, we haven't done it for a couple of years, but we've intentionally, um, put it on the date of the. We haven't done it for a couple of years, but we've intentionally put it on the date of the 17th of August, which coincides with the play around the parishes event. So that community can take part in the duck races as a community university event. So just to, just to put that in there as well.
Thank you very much. You're going to be, the play around the parish being shunned apart. So it's going to be across the bridge and perhaps we can get a duck a piece. Is it for charity, the ducks?
Yeah, we're hoping this year all proceeds will go towards whatever we can do for the Ukrainian appeal. Whether it's local communities that arrive, local people arriving into the community or further afield. But one way or another for people of Ukraine, sorry.
Should we enter a Buckingham Town Council's swamp?
Definitely, yeah, definitely.
And with paddles in it.
Without, without a chain.
We'll get Catherine to knit a little, we'll get Catherine to knit something to put over the duck.
We agree, we're doing, Andy, sorry.
What, what time is this duck?
So it happens from noon till three, which coincides with when the play around the parishes is sort of in full flow.
I've got a lovely photograph of some of our councillors online, all lent on the, like this, lent on the actual bridge. It's quite, all men lent on the bridge together, like lent on a gate. It's quite a good photograph. I think it's when Mark Cole was there. I've got to Amanda, they come back to Andy.
Dean, would you be able to send me a list of what's going to be happening between noon and three? Because I want to let Buckinghamshire Council, who have organised play around the parishes, what's going on.
Yeah, sure. I think it'll be a replica of what happened that, the last time we were able to do it. If you remember, it was about three, three years ago now, before the pandemic, obviously. Yeah, I will send a list, yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
And we just need a little flow on the river that day. We have to open them up a little bit to create some flow, don't we?
Yeah. But I should say that whatever it is, it will complement rather than compete, if that makes sense. It's really key that they complement one another. I know that would be a concern, so.
Are we agreed as committee that we will sponsor a duck or get the council to sponsor a duck?
No, we all just sponsor our own ducks.
But we need one with a merril chain on it, don't we?
That's a good question. Who's favourite to win?
You're not betting on it.
You're not on that type of duck race.
The plastic ducks that hold on.
I wanted one of those ones you have at the seaside, it's paddle.
Oh, right, now I get it. I thought they were literally.
Your mother was coming number two with that. Margaret. No, 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 no. Okay, well, thank you, Dean. Is there any other events the university is putting on that you want us to know about?
There are, and it's only just one, one that's just only just been confirmed. And it's, I don't think it falls in line with the dates for the Jubilee weekend. But we're putting on, it's called Come and Sing for the Queen's Jubilee, which basically involves people coming to the Radcliffe Centre and spending a whole day on the 21st of May. Rehearsing a series of songs that represent the different generations that the Queen has reigned for. And then putting on a performance at the end of the day, which public can attend and listen to all of those singers performing those songs. And it's a collaboration between the university, some choir groups in the local community and and the Alena Orchestra, which is a local community orchestra, who have managed to get some funding to support the event. So that's the only other thing, and it's obviously a community event which is open to the public.
Well, tell me how that is good, we can help support. But besides that, I will decline singing, Dean. Because as councillor Everton and the mayor and councillor Iris will testify that it's probably as well. I did sing at a previous charity event, it was gratefully received, but Phil Zadie's had a charity event for Ukraine and they raised, what was it, £1,400?
It was just short of £1,500.
£1,500, yeah, which with, you know, Linda Watkins. And it was a funny evening, wasn't it? I think it was there. I did get up and sing, Dean, but it was pleasantly received.
I'd pay to, I'd pay to see you sing, Robin.
The idea was that we would get sponsorship for him not to sing.
Oh, yeah.
I think he would sponsor me not to sing.
Would they sponsor you not to sing? I think it's probably would score a good event if I turned up and sung it, Dean.
He actually had quite a sweet singing voice, I think. He did.
I think you're very generous.
You're very generous.
Testify that that might not have been the entire feeling.
I had to go do some washing up at the sun.
But it did cause a laugh, so that was the whole point of it.
Sorry, Keith.
No, it was, it was very, where have all the flowers gone? And I have sung it at the four other events.
Did you hear all the words?
Actually, according to Linda, I missed a verse out.
That's lucky.
Can we admit to that? Amanda said it's very lucky the council's such a man as to miss a verse out. But no, all joking aside, but I think it's great that you're doing money for, money from the Ukraine. And I think it's, we were all there raising money, Mayor was there, councillor Fran Davies and councillor. You get a really good feeling from it, actually, and doing something good and doing no harm. Anyway, that's enough of that. But are we happy with the events list as spread? And we will move on to best kept village, which we're going to win this year, aren't we? My experience of this, members, is that our main problem with best kept village is actually getting Buckinghamshire Council to actually maintain their areas. We have done a lot of work and then we find that they haven't done anything. Things like in the town centre.
Car park.
The car park being a mess and we've now got damage in the ballroom with the war which has been run into. Things like that, all this stuff puts us, that we have won the war before. And because of the size of town, we just find the best kept village. I think all we're asking is to enter it, really. So we're happy to enter.
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
And if we can, any members find things that need improving, it's an opportunity for us to say, you know, because if they give it to Marlowe and they can prove Marlowe and not Buckingham, that would seem really wrong, wouldn't it? So we shouldn't encourage them to improve our town. We went to, the park's been improved and over the river that won an award, so they should want us to win an award. Anyway, that's enough of that, which I'll move swiftly on to item 13. You'll see a new report, I hope we'll have a short discussion about this, accessibility. And you'll see there's photographs being provided to the town centre. I think that ugly boot mine in on appendicitis. As you can see, our town centre, it's safe and safe deteriorating. All these areas have not been improved. Loose cobble, loose stones, chips in pavement, tarmac where there should be bricks. And these are all areas that if you've got a wheelchair, that in this year, if you're blind or elderly and firm, you trip and fall over. So I think that we've done spoke about accessibility, but accessibility is about all need.
And that includes buckets and totters.
So I've opened councillor Davies.
So on page two of the PDC, the bottom page, I took a very similar one and I reported it on Fix My Streets and got the response back that it wasn't the responsibility of Buckinghamshire Council to do anything about that.
Okay, that's grim, isn't it?
I'll find the email.
Where was it? In the same place as this?
Yeah, yeah, now it's, it's that, that, same step, yeah.
Oh, yeah, which is regrettable, isn't it? You know, they, you know, this is, this is our town centre, this is Buckingham's town centre.
That's on the trail, was that, this bit?
You know, this is where we put the town on display and we invite people to it. Councillor Murray.
I just want to know whose decision it was in Buckinghamshire Council to put tarmac outside Smith and Clays instead of a paving stone. The tape, I know the paving stone was broken, but we've now just filled it with tarmac and it looks ugly. And they're not in keeping with the rest, it's just.
It's gross, isn't it?
Yes.
You know, we've got a town centre which was designed, it had a lot of money spent on its design. And whether we agree with that design or not, it needs to be up to date. The upkeep needs to be searched. These photographs date back, some of them, because Amanda and the officers always.
No, this is recent, this tarmac is recent.
I'm looking for a way forward in how we can address these matters. You will be aware, which is not linked to this directly, but is indirectly related. There is a proposal in the Community Board for feasibility study on how to improve the town centre. Perhaps a reasonable suggestion would be to repair it. Would be a feasibility study before spending money on things which are not costed and will be long time in the future. That feasibility study could cost virtually £50,000. And, and then that is not the end of it because it would then, we'd go on paying consultants to look at something. I think we're going to be consulting about our town centre written there. Dominic.
Thank you. Have these been, been reported on Fix My Street? But also, we often hear a lot in council meetings from Shire councillors suggesting that we don't tell them things, even though they get the same agendas that we get. I'm just wondering whose patch does this fall under?
I mean, it's irrelevant for this meeting, but it falls under, all Shire councillors represent everybody in Buckinghamshire. Really, to not fall into the trap of there's a patch, it would suggest that.
We'll make sure that they all get to, because they're not on this committee.
Well, they can get them access to minutes, so.
We're making sure we get these to them, though.
But quite frankly, I've got, it would suggest that my residents on one side of town don't use the town centre and they aren't disabled and they aren't got the rights. So this isn't a Buckinghamshire Council meeting, this is a town council meeting and we're discussing it as town council.
It's making sure that they can't use that excuse in a meeting that they weren't told. We make sure that they all know.
I could assure you the cabinet member's got all these photographs.
I bet, I bet, they do.
And, yeah, I gave them in another conversation. But so I'm looking for a way forward. We're reaching a point, what I call breaking point from the town centre, where wellbeing of all the town centres, one person's trip out is another person's accident, which is another person's failure.
What are our options?
When I think our options are is to write to the two people, write to the Community Board and ask them or to recommend to the council that we put a bid into the Community Board to see whether we can repair all the works in the town centre. And, and which will go nowhere and will cause an awful lot of hot air. But it will actually raise the issue. The other issue is that we write a stern letter to the cabinet member asking him what resources are available to improve Buckingham Town Centre, noting that there's been huge resources spent on other areas in Buckinghamshire on site to improve their areas. All we're asking for is for repairs. We're not asking for anything more than repairs. And if not for that, or make sure that all those cracks in pavement or accidents waiting to happen, councillor Davies.
Can we suggest that rather than just asking for repairs, we ask for the pavements and streets to be made good with the same surfaces that were originally there, rather than just filling in half with tarmac.
Yeah.
So to, to improve the street scene and have a continuity of design.
Yeah.
Margaret. Dean, sorry, Dean.
Just two, two questions. One was whether or not we have a record of when a, any damages first brought to the council's attention. And so that we can keep a track on how long that report has been implacable before anything's done. And the other thing is whether or not we have any system for prioritising issues that do need resolving. So that when we bring them up with the council, that they don't pick the one that's the lowest in the pecking order and focus on the things that really do need to be addressed sooner rather than later. So two, two questions, I hope that's all right.
My knowledge on these things are that there's a report in this, many of these things will be on transport, the bus list being reported. Councillor Davies, San Davies has said, well, if something got told it wasn't actually part of Buckinghamshire Council's land, but it is Buckinghamshire Council's land.
I may have been a very innocent.
But it sounded fun, anyway, though.
Yeah, thank you. Just to say, look, I'm also quite concerned because Giga Clear are doing their work throughout the town. And I believe they're targeting the town centre fairly soon, have already dug up a bit near the King's Head, which was repaired not that long ago. And will they be required to reinstate the original materials? Or will they be using tarmac as they have done on estate developments where they've dug up so much of the town?
I think you write a really, really good point.
Yeah, actually, yes.
The thing is that Giga Clear have been asked to, where they've gone in the tarmac, they've gone back. But we have got, you know, stone and paper. And we need to ask those additional questions. One of the problems is that utilities, like we can see the area outside between the archway, where they've, they've tarmac to where there's paved areas there, that's still waiting for utility to come back and repair anguilla water. That's, when you pass, is it William Hostetts or the Harsh Foundation shop, charity shop, there's an area there.
Just, yeah.
That's been there, that was reported two years ago. And we're still waiting for anguilla water to do this. This is about safety, it's about making our town centre look presentable in two ways. One is to get an interest in it, rather than, at the moment, there seems to be no interest in it. And the other thing is to flag it up as something that we want to do it. Councillor Davies.
I was just going to say, it ties in really with the best kept village competition. When there's things that are out of the residence of all the town councils' control, I think that there should be a motion to county council to ensure that any contractors that are doing any, any works replace the pavement surface like for like in order that it doesn't, doesn't show that anybody's actually dug a hole there.
Yeah.
We need to really find out what the agreements are now.
With Giga Clear especially. Well, I think we've got those options that we need to bring back and discuss one by one. I think the seniors and members are agreeable that we circulate the photographs to the principal cabinet member and ask, have they got a budget substantial enough to look at these works? And would they be able to cost that? Because I, if all these works work out at £1,000 a piece, there's hundreds of thousands of pounds worth of work here. And if we could have a programme of works to, brought forward to address some of these things over a period of time. So we can't expect them to do it all tomorrow. But if we had a programme of work to address these areas, within four to five years, we might have got the town where it needs to be. Because otherwise it's not going to happen. It's been sat there in bayels some time. You would presume that councillor Downham said we should notify the, we shouldn't need to notify the Buckinghamshire Council about this. They should be already doing this. I'm bringing it here because when I work on events in the town centre, councillor Murray and I were down there and we focused on much of this stuff before the fair coming in, whatever. It's one of a few times you can actually do this stuff.
There's not going to be any excuses.
So are we happy that we agree that for the first item in action? And that we, and we follow that up when the response comes back with a fresh release on how we feel about the response we see.
And then where do we go from there? Because we don't want.
The next item would be, is I think that we contact secondly. The next item would be, is, I think, that we contact, secondly, um, I can, we, we contact, um, we make the, all the Buckinghamshire councillors aware that we have taken this action and don't leave anybody out of it. Um, all the community board Buckinghamshire councillors aware of that, that we've asked to get costumes for this. And the other matter is, we can't really take that action till we get your letter back. If the letter goes about saying, I accept what you're saying, we're going to go and get costumes and find a way of resolving this. I think that's a reasonable approach for anyone to give us.
So we offer a programme of events of when these are going to be done.
Yeah, and, and whether they're going to identify funding to resolve it. Councillor Davis.
Seems, it seems to me to be, um, a bit of a, an exercise of utilty for, um, the, um, Shire Council or the community boards to be spending fifty thousand pounds to work out what needs doing. Um, when, um, that, that information is, is, um, they're in, I was going to say black and white, but they are.
Some of it is.
Yeah.
I, I, I couldn't compare more, but I think that by sending this to the community board, that we, that we want them to discuss in the community board these options, and that would be a recommendation to council. Because we can't write to the community board, it should be for council matter, that we recommend to community, that we make an offer to the community board, would they be willing to look at a programme of works to repair all this stuff in the town centre as a secondary option?
T S B first.
Yeah. I don't know the cabinet member, but get the response back. And then when the response comes back, um, we've already agreed that we'll make a bid to the community board. But I do think we have to give the town clerk a chance to discuss that, um, in the office, because there may be reasons why we can't do that. And if we can do it, we make a recommendation to council to, now come back saying, can you give us costumes? And lots of seeing responses, but that's part of the conversation. If we're going to try and improve our town centre, in, um, we need to have to be in there for the long haul. Also, um, we want to save places for our events, don't we? Um, and our market, uh, which we discussed tonight, thanks to officers doing very well. And then I think we'll have it on a future, if we agree, members agree, we'll have it under access at a future meeting to discuss the outcomes of those two findings, um, because we're not going to resolve this in twenty minutes.
No, but you can go on action list, can't it?
It can go on the action list and we'll come back and, 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 and walk away through it. And then I'm happy for members to add to this, um, this list of stuff here.
Do we need to have a vote on this?
Yes, the vote.
We move to vote.
Yeah, yeah, right. All those who say what's suggested. That's really good. And we'll, we'll, we'll agree to do a press release after we set the findings come out. Councillor Murray.
It's a point made by the Madam Mayor and councillor Don you, but Giga Clear.
Yeah.
We really need to find out what has been agreed before they dig up the thing. If there's been agreed that they make good as they find it, then we're in good. But if it's not, we, we don't want to end up with a mess five days down the line and then there are no Giga Clears to claim off. So we really need to stop it before they dig it up. And that's what we need to find out, is what has been agreed with the council and Giga Clear.
Your proposal, councillor Murray, that we write to, um, the Buckinghamshire, asking them that have they got a, 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 a replacement as found.
Yeah.
Agreement with Giga Clear for works in the town. I think that's what we need an answer to, but that can go back on the action list. If, if it's negative or positive, if it's something that needs further, the mayor will see it and, and she'll bring it to another meeting if it's, we need to act quicker. Um, councillor Don you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, from what I understand, utility companies have a right to dig up where they want. So we wouldn't be able to stop them as a body. We can't do anything about that. We can ask a question on what they're going to replace our things with, but we couldn't, we couldn't stop.
I think councillor Murray's pretty reasonable request.
Absolutely.
That's what councillor, the mayor said, is we need to know that when they come into the town centre, they're not going to leave us tarmac through, through a slack rope, uh, and, and then not do anything about it.
Hmm, that's all I want.
The way our town centre looks supports our income and supports the community. So, um, Madam Mayor.
I'd be very, very surprised if they are planning to reinstate it as it was. Very surprised, yeah.
But the letter, we can then take action while afterwards.
Um, yeah.
You never know what the original question is to get the answer, uh, in my experience. So is that agreed? We're going to vote with that, proposed by, um, seconded by, by the mayor, that agreed? Thank you. And yet again, we'll talk about, um, that will come into a future press release when we've got the information back. Um, thank you for that. I hope you thought that was worth clicking on the agenda under access.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, which brings us to budgets. They are what they are.
Climate emergency.
Oh, sorry, climate emergency. Um, straight into the budget. Right, we've got the climate action list on here. Is there anything members wish us to discuss? Noting that we've all been sat here on and off for several hours.
I've made an appointment to, um, try out an electric vehicle off the back of the, um, meeting we had.
Um, when are you doing that?
Um, I'm collecting it Good Friday.
Oh, my God. Is that personal purchase?
No, it's that, that, that trial, um, that you could get. It was, it was at the, um, event that we had.
Kind of town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
Well, both, BP posts.
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't get to drive a milk float in the seventies, um, around with the sheer farmers, um, uh.
Did they call you dirty?
Um, they, they, I, I, they, they said it, I did get caught dirty, yes. Um, and, and, and they regretted me driving it because, um, no sleeping policeman with the milk bottles in there drove the sleeping policeman at the same speed wasn't really what you're supposed to do. So you never asked again.
So, so, so it was really useful. I've been thinking for ages, I'm, I'm interested in it, but I didn't know sort of how to go about trying it out or anything. So it was a brilliant opportunity at, 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 um, annual meeting when they were there. And I think the same people are coming to the, um, Spring Green Fair, aren't they?
Are they?
Yeah. I'm on electric bikes.
Electric bike?
Oh, yes.
I'd be, I'd be.
I've got an electric.
I know you have it.
I might, I, if I can hook up a trailer, I might be able to make my way down to the Spring Green Fair on my bike, but I don't think I can manage it.
Even if you don't, Margaret, I'll try it out. Um.
No.
No.
No, she doesn't want me to try a bike out. It's not nice of this. Um, okay, is there anything on that list, fourteen to whatever you want to approach? Most of it is being covered and I'm conscious that we've had a long evening and, um, Dean had to wait because the previous meeting coming to this one. Is there anything you, on that list, Dean, you want to mention? He's out looking.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Dean.
Oh dear, how long does it take for me to get useless? Sorry, it's, it's been cutting in and out a little bit, the reception on the, on Zoom. But, um, I was just looking at the, through the list and it talks about, um, a bike scheme that you're talking about introducing during the, uh, Spring Green Fair. And I just wondered if, if I could have a bit more information on that so I can share it with some of the students, because I think that could be a way of engaging them in some way in the, in what's going on there.
Members happy that we circulate that information to the university. Is it possible that you could put this event on the board, the board of the university for us?
Yeah, 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 definitely, yeah.
And, and circulate it on the university internal social media for us?
Yeah.
I think it's something they'll be interested in because.
Yeah.
Let's face it, they're the generation that's going to inherit the planet that we've not actually done a good job of looking after.
Yeah, no, it's definitely of interest to, to students and we've got an SU officer who's, who's responsible for this side of things. So as much as we can get them involved and, and, and participate in these sorts of things, the, the better, really.
I agree that you and Amanda and, and the town clerk will communicate on that.
Definitely.
And, um, they're all well into the event.
Well, they might, they might want to be a part of it.
They might want to be part of it. If they've got something they want to bring to it, you know, come along. Right, thank you. Uh, which brings us to, members happy to move on to budgets after I tried to skip past the, um, climate emergency. Are, are we happy tonight? Just to note those budgets, they are what they are, we are where we are. And, um, we did a really big discussion about budgets at the last meeting.
Great.
Agreed, thank you very much. Uh, which brings to Doctor Dees' releases. I think, um, you've basically covered that. Uh, that's, we agree that we'll do a news release on the Spring Fair, um, which we'll put together this week.
Yeah.
Um, to go out, we would do one normally, but we meant it that as it is. And the accessible matters, we agree we can do a news release on that as when appropriate, when the responses come back. Uh, can I ask that we circulate those responses to all the committee, can they get any comments before we do a news release? So it's not just one person's view on it.
Other press release.
The press release, when we get the second one, when we have the members to read the responses before we do a press release on it. Um, and, and if it needs to go to the next meeting, we'll take it to the next meeting. If not, we'll do it if it's an ugly relief, uh, response, we can do an ugly response. Um, but that's where it is, which chairman's items. Uh, I'll just say thank you very much for stopping on tonight, um, to this meeting and, um, and I, I look forward to seeing you at all the events and the contributions of the committee, um, previously, um, throughout the meeting and will be in the future, which brings us to date of next meeting, which is the thirteenth of June, which will be warmer than tonight and, um, and hopefully when we walk out, it might be daylight.
Hmm, it will.
You know, unlike tonight. And thank you very much.